We are here for you no matter how this emergency medical situation will be resolved. DeKalb will continue to collaborate with the CDC, with the Governor's Office, with the State Department of Health, with our local Board of Health, to ensure that we protect the health and safety and welfare of all of our citizens. Once again, we welcome you to this virtual Town Hall meeting. Once again, we want you to know that we are prepared, we are focused, and we will do whatever is necessary to continue to protect the health and safety of our citizens. Joining with us this evening are dedicated, experienced, highly educated and trained public servants who dedicated their lives to serving and representing the citizens of DeKalb County. We are here together to stand together and to let you know that we are cooperating, we are communicating, and we are working together to continue to serve our great county. With us tonight, we have Dr. Sandra Ford, who is the District Health Director for DeKalb County. We have Ms. Ramona Tyson, the Interim Superintendent of the DeKalb County School District. We have Mr. Marshall Mooneyham, the Assistant Chief of our 911 Communications System. Joining us also is Director Joseph Jack Lumpkin, who serves as Public Safety Director for DeKalb County, Georgia. We are here to provide you with critical information. We are also here to answer your questions. And more importantly, we are here to communicate that together, we will face this challenge. Together, we will overcome the challenge. And together, we will work to ensure a safe and secure community. So first, I would like to invite to the podium our illustrious District Health Director, Dr. Sandra Ford.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. CEO and your team, for the opportunity to be innovative enough to provide critical information while at the same time protecting our community. I'm going to provide you some basic information about coronavirus that I hope will help to dispel a lot of the misinformation that has been circulating not only through DeKalb County, but really nationwide as it relates to COVID-19. So let's start from the beginning. What is COVID-19? I've heard a lot of people refer to coronavirus. Coronavirus is a type of virus. There are many coronaviruses. Coronavirus is the same virus that causes the common cold. It is the virus that causes SARS. It is the virus that causes MERS. And so when we speak of this specific type of coronavirus that is impacting our community right now, we say COVID-19 to distinguish from other types of coronavirus. While we have seen more than 1,000 cases in the United States thus far, I would like to remind people that we have over 30 million cases of influenza in the United States. And we have had over 15,000 fatalities from influenza. And so while COVID-19 is a valid concern, we must not forget that influenza is still circulating throughout our communities and impacts the same population that COVID-19 impacts. So how is COVID-19 spread? It is spread through contact. That's number one, droplet infection. So if someone sneezes and you are within a reasonable proximity, which means a six-foot perimeter for more than 10 minutes, or if they sneeze on you and the droplets get on you, a surface that you touch, and then you touch your face, that's one way of contracting the virus. So if someone coughs or sneezes and you're in close proximity, you can catch it like that. You can catch it by being in close contact with an infected individual for more than 10 minutes and within six feet. Or the virus also lives on surfaces for an undetermined amount of time. We're not sure yet. We've heard studies that say it lasts for hours. We've heard studies that say it lasts for days. And so right now, to err on the side of caution, we're recommending that surfaces be cleaned frequently. And I'll talk a little bit about that later. But so surfaces, coughing, and close contact are the three ways that this is spread. Who is most at risk for coronavirus? Well, the same populations that are at risk for flu are the same populations that are at risk for coronavirus. The senior population is at a higher risk for having complications from coronavirus, as are any individuals who are immunocompromised. What is immunocompromised? That's anyone whose immune system is not 100%. That can be a pregnant woman. It could be a diabetic. Someone on anti-hypertension medicine. Someone on chemotherapy. Anyone who is on chronic steroids. Your immune system is compromised. And so if you were to get COVID-19, you might be at risk for a more severe course. Having said that, I also want to say that 80% of the individuals that have contracted COVID-19 have a mild course. The high-risk group is 20% of those folks who are infected. And so that's what we need to be focusing our energy on. The symptoms of COVID-19 are very similar to influenza. That's a cough, a fever. With COVID-19, you'll tend to see more shortness of breath. With influenza, you tend to have more body aches and overall poor feeling. And so that's sort of been the distinction between COVID-19 and influenza is that you tend to have more respiratory symptoms with COVID-19. How do we test for this? Right now, in Georgia, the only testing facility is the Georgia Public Health Lab. And so they have received a tremendous number of tests. And so it's a timeframe issue in terms of trying to get results quickly. We will go through the steps of what one needs to do if they are suspected of having COVID-19 a little farther down in the presentation. How do we prevent this? You prevent COVID-19 the same way you prevent all infectious diseases, including the flu. Number one is to wash your hands. But there's a process. You wash your hands for 20 seconds with soap and water. I've been seeing a lot of folks rinsing their hands. You must use soap and water. Hand sanitizer. All hand sanitizer is not made the same. It has to contain a minimum of 60% alcohol to be effective. So hand washing. If you have a cough, cover your cough. We're not recommending coughing in your sleeve because the virus lives on surfaces. And so we don't know if you may touch your sleeve or someone may grab your arm and contract it like that. And so we're recommending that people cough into a tissue if you have to cough, and then discard the tissue immediately. If you have to cough in your hands, then you certainly should wash your hands immediately after use. You also need to wash your hands every time you touch a surface, every time you touch food, and certainly every time you touch another individual. The third way to prevent COVID-19 is to make sure that the surfaces that you come in frequent contact with are cleaned on a regular basis. Now, we are very good about cleaning countertops and things along that line, but there's a lot of other surfaces that need to be considered. For example, doorknobs, your keyboards, cabinet handles, the faucets in restrooms. One of the biggest culprits is your cellphone. And basically, anything that you touch that other people touch frequently needs to be cleaned on a regular basis. So that's three. Number three, wash your hands, cover your cough, keep your surfaces clean. Number four is critical. Do not come to work when you are ill. And do not send your children to school when they are ill. We've talked a lot about perfect attendance and things along that line. This is not the time to be worrying about perfect attendance. If you are ill, you are risking exposing other people to this virus. So do not report to work. How are we testing again, and who should be tested? We have a limited number of tests in Georgia. And so everyone who is concerned probably doesn't need to be tested, first of all. But if they do need to be tested, there's a process. Your physician first has to notify Georgia Department of Public Health that you have a suspected case. So you should call your physician ahead of time so that they can protect their office appropriately. You may have to come into a back door or a side door. So if you are symptomatic, you call your doc. You say, "I have been exposed to someone who is COVID-19 positive, or I have traveled to one of the Level 3 countries. I'm concerned I have symptoms." At that point, your doctor should make arrangements for you to come into the office from a different route than the rest of his patients. He will then call the Georgia Department of Public Health, who will provide guidance on collecting a specimen based on whether or not the index of suspicion is high enough. Once a specimen is collected, it will be transported to CDC where tests will... Sorry. First, it goes to Georgia Public Health Lab. So from the doctor's office, it goes to the Georgia Public Health Lab, where we perform the test. If the test is considered positive, it is at that point a presumptive positive because all positive tests at this point must be confirmed by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. So from Georgia Public Health Lab, tests then go to CDC, and then we find a confirmation or not. So far, all of our tests at Georgia Public Health Lab that have been presumed positive have ended up being positive. And so we are treating presumed positives in Georgia as if they actually had the disease. And so at that point, the guidance is dependent upon whether or not they are symptomatic and the level of their symptoms. Clearly, if they are having respiratory symptoms, they would be hospitalized if they are severe enough. Otherwise, we are recommending isolation, staying away from people for 14 days until symptoms have resolved. And of course, contact isolation both inside their home and outside of their home. There is a hope that in the upcoming weeks, more tests will be available so that more facilities are able to test because obviously, it's quite a burden on a single lab to monitor the entire state. Having said that, be clear that once we start testing more individuals, we will have more positives. And so we, as a community, need to be prepared for what that looks like in terms of schools, work, et cetera, and how much we're going to have to isolate people. And so that's something we need to be thinking about moving farther down the road. But again, everyone does not need a test of COVID-19. It's just like the flu. If your symptoms are mild, you might just want to self-isolate and wait until the symptoms go away. But that's really a discussion between you and your physician. What is the Board of Health's role in COVID-19 management? We are not a directive body. Our role, the Board of Health's role, is to provide guidance to institutions about what is the best method of protecting their clients, their constituents, their students, their workers. And we are basing our guidance on what is the latest from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and Georgia's Department of Public Health. That is, our primary role is guidance and information sharing, of course. As this virus continues to spread, we will start to have more individuals that are requiring isolation. And decisions have to be made about providing food, medications, et cetera. One way that individuals can help, DeKalb County Board of Health has a group called the Medical Reserve Corps, which is a volunteer group that provides assistance in the case of public health emergencies, which this certainly is right now. And so we would be looking for volunteers if it comes to that, to provide food, to shut in folk, medications if needed, whatever people need. And so I urge you to look on our website, dekalbhealth.net. And there is a place on our website where you can sign up and be part of the Medical Reserve Corps and do your share in trying to help eradicate this disease. New is scary. This is a novel virus. We are learning about it every day. So guidance changes frequently. And we are chasing it, trying to provide everyone with the most up-to-date information. At this point, we learn something new every day. What was a guideline a few days ago may no longer be appropriate. And so we ask all of the community's patients as we try to manage this brand-new disease and try to figure out the best way to control both the spread of the disease and the levels of anxiety surrounded by the disease. We have seen a lot of issues in this community, which is an extremely diverse community with profiling. We need to be mindful that everybody is at risk for contracting this disease. So there's no need to single out particular ethnic groups and avoid them. We need to be protecting ourselves from everyone. And we need to make sure that we're washing our hands for everybody and being mindful of infection control at all times. My job is to make sure that we are all protected, make sure that we have as much information as we can, and make sure that my team has the ability to respond to this emergency as it continues to change. As testing becomes more available, it's my hope that the Board of Health will have tests that we can perform and take some of the burden off of the state lab. But we'll have to figure that out as well. So at this point, we are just managing this day by day, making sure that we have the appropriate information provided to the community. Again, making sure that hand washing is as common a practice as it should already be. And trying to relieve some of this fear. So our message is prevention and protection, but not panic. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ford. Ms. Carlos, if there are listeners or people who are streaming, how would they be able to direct questions to the panel throughout the remainder of the Town Hall?
On your screen, you should see all of the methods in which we are accepting questions for this virtual Town Hall meeting.
On your screen, you will see all of the ways that you can... We are receiving questions for this Town Hall meeting. You may email us at townhall@dekalbcountyga.gov. That's townhall@dekalbcountyga.gov. You can find us on social media, on Facebook, You could also find us on Twitter, @itsinDeKalb, or twitter.com/itsinDeKalb. The final way that you can reach us this evening is you can call, and we have operators standing by to take your questions, at area code 404-371-2400.
Thank you so much. And the CEO is learning something. It's not coronavirus, it's COVID-19. That's important. Even though I hear it 1,000 times a day on TV, that's not the correct description of the disease, COVID-19. Also with us today is Assistant Chief Michael Yarborough, who's here with us. Assistant Chief, thank you so much. And now we're here from our interim school superintendent, Ms. Ramona Tyson, a lifelong educator, a person I worked with prior to now, and a young lady who has stepped into the gap and has done an outstanding job stabilizing the DeKalb County School District. So Ms. Tyson.
Thank you, CEO Thurman, for inviting the DeKalb County School District to present this evening. It's very important to us that we communicate with our families, with our parents, with our guardians, with our employees of the measures that we are taking to minimize the risk and the exposure of COVID-19. I want you to know that we are working in concert and under the guidance of the DeKalb Board of Health, the Governor's Office, the Georgia Department of Public Health, the CDC, and the Georgia Department of Education. We have a cross-functional team that meets every single day. And we are working to ensure that we are recalibrating as this issue is changing almost by the hour. Tonight, everything that I present is available on the school district's website. And you may go there and very prominently on the first landing page, you may click, and you will be able to get to these documents that I'm presenting this evening. On Monday, March 9th, we released information regarding what we are doing to ensure that our students are safe. First thing that we did, and we want to communicate with you, new students that are coming from high-risk areas, we are asking those parents to call us, not arrive at the school, not arrive at the central office, but to call the school district and to inform us where they are coming from. And then we will work with the related agencies to make a determination if appropriate registration and the attendance plan that is needed for those students. Students that are coming from high-risk areas and families should not visit the local school nor the district office. Again, we want to emphasize. Please call us or email. Effectively this past Monday, we have canceled all international and out-of-state field trips and conferences. These are trips that were planned for students as well as employees. And we are looking at in-state trips on a case-by-case basis that could change depending on how this issue continues to progress. We are not approving any new field trips or any new conferences until further notice. And parents, we want you to know, at any time for any in-state field trips, if you do not feel comfortable with your students attending, you may make the choice for them not to participate without penalty. But as of today, we are still assuming our field trips on a case-by-case basis. When students are traveling, they should inform us if they are ill. And when they are coming back into the school district and they've been traveling or they have traveled on their own time, we should receive a phone call from the parent or the guardian to inform us if that student is not well. And if that student is not well, we will not allow re-entry into the school district. Again, we will be working under the guidance of the agencies to make a determination when it's appropriate to come back into the school district. I also want to share with you, the same rules apply to our 15,000 employees. They too cannot travel out of the country or out of the state on any employee travel. We are not approving any new trips out of the country or out of the state. We are looking at their conferences on a case-by-case basis in-state. And the same rule applies. When they have traveled out of the country on their own, they must call us, and we'll run through a series of information to determine their re-entry back into work. Let me go back to school district and school events. The school district at this time, and I want to stress, at this time, has not placed restrictions on student participation in athletics, regional, state, or national competitions within Georgia. That's very important, within Georgia. However, we are going to reserve the right to revisit this. At this time, we're going to work closely with our local public health officials, and we will make some determinations about extracurricular or student competitions in the event we have to cancel. Field trip wellness. For those trips that we are approving on a case-by-case basis in-state only, we are working with our lead nurse and the nurses that we have at every school. We do have nursing personnel in every 137 schools in DeKalb County. And we have instituted a wellness check before every child gets on a bus to go on a field trip. The rule of thumb that we're looking for are flu-like symptoms. The threshold is a fever. And if that child or that employee is exhibiting any symptoms of wellness, we are not going to permit them to go on that trip. And it is an automatic go-home. If they do go on the trip, when they come back as they exit the bus, we are working with the local principal and the nurse in that building to make another determination. Post-trip, a wellness check. And if they are exhibiting flu-like symptoms, particularly a fever, it is an automatic go-home. Cleaning of facilities. We want you to know that we have escalated the cleaning protocol for our buildings. First of all, it's important for you to know that we are utilizing products confirmed by the manufacturer to kill coronavirus and other viruses. We will continue to clean and disinfect our schools on a daily basis, particularly the high-touch areas. School leaders, building principals, have been directed to provide adequate supply of hand soap, hand sanitizers, paper towels, and disinfectants for building cleanliness. We have provided an opportunity for our building leaders on a regular basis to receive additional supplies. We are escalating the delivery of those materials to each school on a daily basis. In addition to that, we have raised a Tier 2 level of training for all of our custodial staff. They are this week going through a higher level of training for direct compact of this issue that we're dealing with. As mentioned before, we are working with the materials that we need to be able to disinfect our buildings. Now, I will tell you, we are a village, and we will accept donations. As a parent myself, I'm always giving donations to schools. And we encourage our parents to do the same. But we do want the things that we really need. And so we're asking, if you want to donate to your school, please give products that are student-friendly. And that includes Clorox wipes, Lysol wipes, hand sanitizer, and hand soap. But we are asking you not, I repeat, do not bring bleach to the school. We'll handle that level of material from our custodial experts. I want you to know, in the event a school closure becomes necessary, we are prepared. We are prepared with what we call digital learning days. Some individuals call those virtual learning days. The school district has had this in effect for a while. When we have snow days or inclement weather days, our virtual learning platform is in place. And it is in place if we should need it for this situation. Teachers are prepared. They have assignments already loaded into the software platform. And our children, for grades 1 through 12, will be able to get their content information to complete a plethora of assignments that have been prepared by their teachers. Now, for our younger children, pre-K through kindergarten, we are going to have hard copy copies just in case they need them. I want you to know, if you want to stay up to date with everything that we're doing, we always do updates on our website on a regular basis. We are working in concert again with the Public Health Department, with the Board of Health Department, the Georgia Department of Education, the Governor's Office, and the U.S. Department of Education as well. We are ready. We have been proactive. We are prepared. And we will continue to work every day to ensure our children, our families, and our employees are safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, for your detailed and very informative presentation. Ms. Carlos, if you want to, once again, update the audience as to how they can forward questions to us.
If you have any questions regarding the coronavirus for any of our panelists, you may email us at townhall@dekalbcountyga.gov. You may contact us on social media, on Facebook, at itsinDeKalbGA, and on Twitter, at itsinDeKalb. You can also call us and reach a live operator right now at 404-371-2400. That phone number will be active during this live virtual Town Hall meeting and will close at the end of this meeting. That's 404-371-2400.
And we would also like to share with you, if for some reason your question is not answered during the Town Hall, we will follow up after this program ends on tomorrow and the next day to make sure that we reach out to you and answer any and all questions that you might have.
We will post all answers to questions that are sent on our Facebook page as well as our website that is dedicated to coronavirus at www.dekalbcountyga.gov/coronavirus.
Coronavirus, COVID-19. We are learning. We are learning.
Thank you, Mr. CEO, and the distinguished panelists for your daily leadership, as you have demonstrated over the years. We appreciate that leadership, and as I have said, we have to keep our leaders healthy for, without our leaders, then we will have a challenge. We, at public safety here today, represent all the DeKalb County employees for what we tell you today about our preparation, our preparedness, our planning, applies to every unit of DeKalb County, every functional unit of DeKalb County. The, we have a plan, not starting with COVID-19, but we've been planning for years. Before I arrived, before the CEO arrived, I don't know about this, our planning has been to this detail, but the, our chief operating officer started in this type of plan, our emergency operation. So, we have an idea about the planning. Our essential function is to serve and to protect our citizens and stakeholders in DeKalb while building trust with our community. We can't do this without community. We can't stop disasters, or nor can we address such issues as COVID-19 without community, for we have a personal responsibility. But public safety individuals in the department, such as the finance, which has to work, the backend departments, the IT departments, if they don't work, public safety cannot provide, or public health cannot provide what it needs. So, this is a team effort under the CEO's leadership. And to explain some of that to you, we're going to bring up our 911 communication. When you think, Director, when you think of communication to public safety, the first people that folks call is 911. Now, we're going to suggest to you, with COVID-19, that is not necessarily to overload 911 with questions. You've heard numbers, you've heard of ways to get information you need. If you overload 911, then other services will not be able to perform. We will not be able to provide ambulances in certain services when the life-threatening opportunities are out there. Director Moonham, please come up and talk to us a few moments about prior planning and how we have done this, and how the continuity of operation plans actually suggests that we will always keep our opportunities going.
Good evening. Thank you, Director Lumpkin. In DeKalb County, planning did not begin just a week ago or a month ago. We're in a constant state of planning in DeKalb County, in DeKalb County public safety. In February 2017, DeKalb County Board of Commissioners adopted an emergency operations plan and also a continuity of operations plan. These plans service all hazards operating procedures for maintaining county operations and responding to service needs during a variety of disruptive events. These plans are reviewed and updated annually and were activated in 2018 during Tropical Storm Irma, as well as 2019 during Super Bowl VIII. The plans define roles and responsibility and coordination between our federal partners, our state partners, the county, our municipal entities, the nongovernmental organizations and community partners, the school system, and hospitals and medical support providers. The emergency, the emergency operation plan establishes a framework through which the county may prepare for, respond to, recover from, and mitigate to prevent the impacts of a wide variety of disasters that could adversely affect the health, safety, and our general welfare of the residents and emergency workers of DeKalb County. The emergency operation plan describes strategies through which the county mobilizes resources, facilitates intergovernmental operations, and defines essential support functions and responsible agency. In DeKalb 911, as an example, all of our E-911 call-takers are emergency medical dispatch certified through the International Academy of Emergency Dispatch. We have recently implemented an emerging infectious disease surveillance tool which allows us to interrogate callers on specific calls, primarily for flu-like symptoms or breathing problems. This allows our dispatchers to make notifications to first responders to ensure that they have the proper personal protection equipment upon going on scene of all calls. We have also worked with our emergency management partners and the fire rescue department to provide telephone numbers to non-emergency callers who are seeking information on services. DeKalb County 911, we will continue to be always ready and always there.
That's the first responders, that's an example of some of the things that they are doing, wherein that we do not send our people into a situation that hinds their risk. The, with, one of the things about management and leadership, we've got to protect our staff in order for them to be able to protect our citizens and stakeholders. So, we've got to keep them safe, and things of that nature. And fire service, they have worked out the issues and agreements with our, excuse me, with our ambulance provider, AMR, wherein that they will respond as opposed to a rapid response vehicle or ambulance and do the engagement with patients suspected of being COVID-19 patients. That reduces the risk to our staff and puts the risk into a staff that is well-prepared for as our staff is. But our staff also has to fight fires out there every day, and we don't want to have to have an issue where we take people offline. The next slide shows you here some of the key essential support functions. We have these support functions identified throughout for our government. These are key ones that the public are typically see, the public health and medical services, particularly provided by our fire service, our paramedics, our EMTs that are, and our medical director, which Dr. Ford serves so well for us with our three hats on. And currently, we have Dr. Carr from the Embry Group serving as our, so we have a communication there, Mr. CEO, wherein we are getting our procedures, protocols, et cetera, checked. The CEO's Office of Communication is a key factor, the communications overall with our government, 911 you just heard it from, emergency management is a key area, our logistics and resources. If our fuel is not there, we can't function. If our fleet is not there, we can't function. If our IT, those are backdoors that citizens don't think, but we have continuity plans for all of those functions, and they are constantly updated. The Office of Innovation and Technology with the IT type of there, we cannot function in no government in this day. And of course, with our leadership, with the CEO's office as well as our human resources, wherein the, our human resources departments are servicing those seniors, those care, that have lived their lives and, which I am one also, but have, they deserve the opportunity to have all of these services in their golden years. DeKalb is well protected, DeKalb is looking forward, we're going to get through this, it's no need of panicking, we're going to work hard. Will the numbers go up? Of course, we anticipate that. We have contingency plans for different steps. Will the numbers stay level, we hope. But regardless where we go, we're going to get through it with appropriate leadership, planning, and preparation for the next step. Thank you, Mr. CEO.
Thank you, Director Lumpkin. And now, we will entertain some questions that have been provided by our citizens here in DeKalb and quite frankly, from citizens all across the state of Georgia. Ms. Carlos.
Our first question is about community. Our neighborhood board and other community organizations are looking at ways we can support people in the community who may need to be quarantined or are sick in the event of an outbreak in our community, especially those who have limited resources and/or assistance. For instance, making sure they have food and water, making sure they have transportation to the doctor, making sure they know what resources are available to them in case they are ill or out of work. However, we don't want to duplicate efforts. Is this type of support and planning already included in DeKalb County's preparedness plans? And does the county have guidance on how communities and neighborhoods can prepare for a potential outbreak and make sure our neighbors are taken care of?
I'll refer this question to Dr. Ford.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. I can answer it to some level. The DeKalb County government has a number of different community resources and departments that specifically target specific populations. But as far as the Board of Health goes, that's why I mentioned the Medical Reserve Corps as a volunteer opportunity for folks who are interested in supporting populations that may not be supported by some of the other community programs. And so, we will try to gather names and figure out who's available to provide these types of services, rides, of course, making sure that everyone is adequately protected. The most important thing, I think, is food and water, and so, we'll try to partner with different programs in the county to make sure that we can maximize service delivery in the event that COVID-19 continues to spread. But a lot of these efforts are going to be needing to be done at the, truly at the neighborhood level. So, these would be your homeowner associations and groups along that line that will have to make sure that they're checking on folks. We have no way of knowing at the 50-foot level who's ill, and so, folks need to start being mindful of watching out for their senior citizens and checking on people you haven't seen for a while. The other piece of this is the behavioral health component of this. This is very stressful, and a lot of folks are walking around with a lot of anxiety. And so, we need to make sure that we are checking on people both physically and mentally as this continues, because as this virus continues to spread, the level of anxiety and distress among folks is going to grow, particularly if you're one of those who is quarantined and cannot work.
Thank you, Dr. Ford. Superintendent Tyson, if a student becomes ill or presumptively ill, are there services available for a student who cannot attend school?
Thank you, Mr. Thurman, absolutely. The school district has in place the ability to be able to provide students with virtual learning opportunities, and also particularly our students that may be special education students on IEP, we have special options for those students. We will also work through our hospital homebound program to ensure that those services and wraparound services are available to those students.
Thank you. Next question, Ms. Carlos.
How many people have been tested in DeKalb County so far for the coronavirus?
So, I have no idea, because those tests take place at the Georgia Public Health Lab. I know that the Board of Health has received countless calls and presentation of folk that are coming to be tested at the Board of Health. We do not have tests. All testing is done at the Georgia Public Health Lab, so when you present at the Board of Health, all we're going to do is refer you to your private physician, who can then contact the Public Health Lab and the Department of Public Health and determine whether or not you need to be tested. So, we have no number for you.
Dr. Ford, I have a question, follow-up. The media is reporting two presumptive cases in DeKalb County. Explain that process and how they were able to come in possession of that information.
Sure. So, symptomatic patients presented to their private physician or a hospital and were then referred to the Georgia Public Health Lab, where testing was, the lab provides the test, and so, the individuals were tested. The Georgia Public Health Lab runs two tests on every individual to ensure that it's a positive. If it is a positive, at this point, those tests are then sent to CDC for confirmation. And so, there's always a delay, because it takes anywhere between 24 and 48 hours to test at the Public Health Lab, and then CDC takes time to test, because all tests in the nation are going through CDC. And there was a perception that because we are right down the street from CDC, that somehow we had priority in testing, that is incorrect. We're in the queue, just like every other health department in the nation. And so, when they complete our test, it is then a confirmed positive. However, we are treating all presumed positive tests as if they were positive, and so, we are recommending the same interventions for those patients that we would recommend for confirmed positives from CDC.
Yes. Director Lumpkin, and I think Assistant Chief, you mentioned, of course, you're in 911. If there is a concern that a person may have become ill or infected with the disease, what information should be shared with the persons in 911 who's receiving the call?
They can provide us with the symptoms. You know, it depends on if they are having a medical problem at the time. We can send an ambulance out if they are having a medical problem, if it's a breathing issue or something that rises to a high level. If not, we can provide them with information for the health department or the hospitals to let them to talk to a medical professional.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Carlos.
If someone feels they have symptoms but doesn't have a primary care physician, or it's after hours, who do they call? Where do they go?
That's a great question. What we are proposing to folks who don't have a primary care physician is to call their local emergency room. Do not just show up in the emergency room, you need to call someone and let them know that you either are symptomatic and have traveled out of the country, or you believe that you have been exposed to someone with COVID-19, so that the emergency room staff can be ready for you and usher you in through a separate, hopefully a separate entrance, so that you're not exposing other patients who may be there for other issues. And at that point, you would be isolated until a test can be acquired from Georgia Public Health Lab, and then you would be tested, and the process would continue from there. Every person that presents to the emergency department is not going to be tested. It depends on your symptoms and your level of risk for contracting this virus.
Dr. Ford, the isolation is voluntary. So, what, and how would you encourage, and what do you say to individuals who either are presumptive or have been diagnosed as it relates to the isolation, and why they should isolate themselves and be very serious about that?
I'm glad you asked that also. That is a challenge for us. At this point, we are not exercising drastic measures to ensure that folks are staying put. We're hoping that common courtesy for other individuals rules. We are asking that folks remain in home, not only to protect themselves from getting a worse, worsening of the virus, but also to protect other people. And so, when we ask you to stay home for 14 days, that is a solid, that does not mean going out to the grocery store, that means staying in your home, and in some instances, even isolating yourself from other family members. So, you may need to be in separate bedrooms, use separate facilities. But we don't, we're not enforcing it at this point, it is a recommendation that you self-isolate.
And we're dealing with this. What if I'm just feeling real bad, I'm coughing, sneezing, hadn't been diagnosed, have not been to a doctor, should I come to work?
Well, again, let me remind you that it's flu season, so anytime you're coughing and sick, you shouldn't be presenting to work. Now, having said that, I'm crystal clear, there's economic impact to not going to work for some folks, and if you're an hourly person and you don't go to work, you don't get paid. However, that is our guidance to not present, because once you're sick, then you infect the entire office or your entire workforce. And so, that is our solid recommendation, is do not present to work if you are ill, and do not send your children to school if they are sick, and do not bring your children to work when school is closed and they cannot attend school.
Thank you. Ms. Tyson, you want to weigh in on school attendance?
Thank you, Mr. Thurman. Absolutely. And you know, this thing is moving so fast. I'll be just honest with you. On Monday, I said if a parent chooses to self-quarantine and has not checked in with the doctor, that's an unexcused absence. Late today, I revisited that because our parents need to have support from the school district. Now, we want your children in school. We love educating your children. So, we want to see them every single day. But if your child is sick and your child is exhibiting flu-like symptoms or your child has a fever, keep your child home. That is the best place for them to be. And we will work with you to ensure that their educational learning continues when they are well enough to do it. So, we are your partner. We are right here with you. But we want to make sure we have a healthy child at school amongst other healthy children amongst healthy employees.
Thank you so much. That was a very firm but from Dr. Ford.
And thank you. I just wanted to throw something in there because the literature right now is stating that COVID-19 in children has a very mild course. And so, some people are asking us, well, if it's a mild disease in children, why does my child have to be quarantined or isolated? It's not so much the child, it's the other people in the house who may be vulnerable. So, your child may have a mild course, but grandma may not or some of the other family members may not. And so, it's to protect everyone in the household that we ask that children not present to school when they're symptomatic.
And this is a question for the entire panel. DeKalb is one of the most diverse counties in the Southeast. I recall during my tenure at the DeKalb Schools, we spoke 165 different languages. What are we doing? And I'm sure the audience would love to know to make sure this critical information is being shared in families and homes where English is spoken as a second language, if it's spoken at all.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
I first like to respond to that as Representative of the School District. I mentioned earlier that on our website, we have a very prominent place for you to just click and get our information. When you go to that website, in the upper right-hand corner, you will see the flags of the international countries. All you have to do is click on the country of choice and the information automatically translates. It's automatic. You see your flag, you click on it, and our information goes from English to Burmese just that fast. Anything we're sending out in hard copy, we are converting into 14 different languages. And so, we're making sure that we are inclusive to our international children and families.
Thank you. Director Lumpkin, anything you want to add? Assistant Chief, either one.
We spoke in the last meeting of pursuing what the school district has now in order to convert all of the information we are receiving from public health and we're receiving from CDC into the various languages that we know we service. And we have a language line that operates with us now, and we're trying to get there where the school district is.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Ford.
Thank you. DeKalb County Board of Health has the same language capacity translation as the school district does. If you click on dekalbhealth.net, all of our information can be translated into a number of different languages. We also have staff that speak, I believe, about 30 languages, just, you know, from our own staff. And we are partnering with our different communities to make sure that the messaging is getting out in that manner as well.
Thank you. Ms. Carlos.
With spring break approaching for many school students, there are several questions about whether or not travel to states that have declared state of emergency should require self-quarantine upon return.
Wow. The spring break question that's looming, not just in DeKalb, all over this country. Dr. Ford.
Is that a school question or is that a...
Yeah, I think it's a tag team question here.
I got tagged for that one. Okay. So, here's the thing. Right now, I believe we're up to five states that have declared a state of emergency. A state of emergency in and of itself is not reason at this point for quarantine. However, if you have come in contact clearly with someone with COVID-19 or if you return from travel symptomatic, yes, your index of suspicion should be a little bit higher. But if we were to quarantine every individual that comes back from Florida or from, you know, any of these other states, it would literally shut down, you know, operations. And so, at this point, we are being mindful of that and only those who are returning symptomatic or for some reason have clear exposure to someone with COVID-19. Those are the ones we would separate from everyone else.
Ms. Tyson, you getting ready to send about 98,000 students on spring break?
Absolutely. And so, first of all, we will be issuing a spring break letter next week, and we're going to give parents our guidance on proactive measures we're going to ask them to take. Naturally, when they return, we want our parents to make sure that they do not send to school any child that is sick. We're going to keep continuing, going back to the factor of if your child is exhibiting flu-like symptoms and has a fever, do not send them to school. Naturally, we do not have the jurisdiction to tell you where you can go and where you cannot go. But when it's time to come back to school, we want you to call us. Don't come up to the school if the child is sick. Call us, and we will give you guidance on how to make a re-entry back into the school district.
All right. Thank you.
Who should a parent or student contact if a school does not have the appropriate supplies and cannot obtain them? Will there be a hotline to report concerns?
The first step we want our parents to take is to call the local school principal. Your principal has the autonomy and has been empowered to get access to every single supply that they need. So, first step, we want you to call the principal. And if you feel that the correct measures have not taken place, the next step is to call the principal's boss, which is the regional superintendent. And again, on our website, very clearly stated, we have listed all of our schools and the regional superintendent. We also have an opportunity for you to email us. And on our website, we have several links. One is called You Tell Us. When you click on that link, it comes directly into my office. There is also an email address that you can email me direct. And I have five people that do nothing, particularly during this time, to man that email address all day long. And that email address is supt.dekalschoolsga.org. Let me repeat that. I made a mistake. S U P T at dekalschoolsga.org. It goes into a repository, and I have five people that do nothing but pull those emails all day. And we will get to them, and we will respond to them, and we will act on them. So, you have a way to get to us, but we ask that you start with the principal. And then, the principal's boss, the regional superintendent. If not, come directly to my office through those email addresses.
And as an aside, we are encouraging employers in the public and the private sector to make sanitizing, sanitation vials available to your employees. I'm very proud of the fact that our chief operating officer, Mr. Zach Williams, took it upon himself to deploy sanitizers throughout this building and, of course, throughout county government. We want to make sure that we are doing everything we can. And I know Dr. Ford has said it multiple times. I've heard in person, one of the most important things you can do is wash your hands and use sanitizers. So, having sanitizers and soap available is critical to preventing or mitigating the spread of COVID-19.
What is the threshold for canceling public gatherings? Should parents avoid child birthday parties, school functions, and community gatherings?
You know, I'm glad you're asking these questions, but these are difficult questions. Some of this has to be based on your level of concern for exposure. I think at this point, the level of anxiety is so high that we're probably acting a little more aggressively than we normally would. In terms of large, large gatherings such as sporting events, the health department alone would never make that decision. It would have to be made in conjunction with leadership that sponsor those types of events based on whatever guidance we receive from the state and from the CDC. In terms of individual gatherings like birthday parties, it's really up to the level of comfort of the parents and all of the parents. And so, probably, you'll see a lot of cancellations now just based on fear. And plus, it's really hard to police children in terms of hand washing and not touching surfaces. I would never destroy a child's joy by recommending cancellation of a birthday party, but it truly is an individual decision based on your own level of comfort and your level of exposure to the disease. If you have other people that are vulnerable in your home, you might want to be a little more cautious.
Let's talk a little bit more about senior citizens and myself, who may be, yes, who may be more vulnerable. I see my director here, Scott, and let's talk how and what can we do to help our seniors in our community be safe at this time?
That's me too.
That's you too, Dr.
So, seniors really are the population that we're most concerned about because of their vulnerability. And so, we have made special efforts to reach out to nursing facilities that house seniors to make sure that they have appropriate protections in place for the seniors and for the staff and for the visitors and making sure that these facilities are communicating with family members to be sure that they are not presenting to visit seniors when they themselves are ill with anything. A lot of these facilities have recommended not bringing children into the facility at this time because of the vulnerability of passing on diseases and illnesses to this already vulnerable population. And so, we're trying to make sure that those types of facilities are provided with extra guidance in terms of protection.
Thank you so much. We have the director of our senior services here in DeKalb County, Mr. Damon Scott, and I wanted him to share with the audience the steps we are taking and to ensure that our senior populations are safe during this public health crisis.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. We have taken a lot of precautions to make sure that our seniors are safe and making sure that we have sanitizing stations in all of our senior centers that have been posted. And we made sure that all the CDC information around the COVID-19 information is posted on all the doorways, entry points at each one of our centers and our facilities and had information sessions so that not only our seniors that are in the centers, but also our homebound population has the information as well. So, we're also working with our transportation providers to make sure they have the information as well as our volunteers and our Meals on Wheels. And we're in the process of getting additional shelf-stable meals for the homebound seniors just in case they're not able to come into the side center. So, we're looking at it from a holistic point of view.
Thank you so much.
What parameters will be used to determine when and if county government offices will either be closed to the public or closed completely? What contingency plans are in place in the event of a forced government shutdown?
We have ongoing discussions. I think Director Lumpkin talked about it along with senior staff and, of course, based on the fact situation as it presents themselves. There is no hard, fast rule in place, but we will continue to monitor the situation as we have monitored the situation and recognize, though, that this county depends on this government to provide critical essential services. There will be no shutdown of those services, no matter what the case might be.
Do you have advice for how someone with a disability, is elderly, or has another high-risk factor, along with transportation challenges, might be able to get a backup supply of medication? Medicare, DMedicaid, and private insurance don't authorize payment until a current supply is exhausted. Is there some allowance for exceptions in cases of public health emergencies?
So, any decisions made about Medicare, Medicare D would certainly come at the federal level. That would have to be a level much higher than the decision-making bodies at my level. But we would try to, as much as possible, see if we could identify samples for critical medications if we had some available. But that's always a challenge as well.
How will the March 24 election be made safe for voters, poll workers, and students at the school where I vote?
I know that Mr. Sam Tillman, who is chair of our election board as well as our election director, are taking all necessary steps to limit and mitigate any potential for the transfer of COVID-19 or any other contagious disease by cleaning, obviously, the apparatus, items that are touched such as doorknobs and other things, to do everything we can to ensure that. Now, I also know, having talked to our superintendent, that 91 polling sites, is that right?
Yes, sir. 91 of our 137 schools are polling sites. And so, today, just today, and if my seven bosses are watching this, this is new news for them because I haven't had an opportunity yet to talk with them because we were meeting this afternoon. And we are taking a serious look at making a decision to make March 24 the Digital Learning Day so that we can minimize the exposure of our students and our staff in the building. And then, when the polling sites have closed at 7:00 PM, we will be sending our custodial staff in to do a Level 2 cleaning just for extra insurance in all the areas where the polling took place. That is not confirmed yet. Let me make sure my parents understand that. Look for us to make a firm decision on that by next week. But that's where the thinking is tonight, sir.
Thank you so much. One of the questions I received, an email that I shared with Director Lumpkin as well as Chief Fulham, of a spouse who was concerned about the safety of her husband answering emergency calls and whether or not he would have the necessary protective equipment. Chief Fulham, could you speak to that? Because I want to reassure all of our men and women in uniform that we are going to take every step available to us to make sure that they are safe when responding to emergencies throughout the county.
Yes, CEO. And good evening to everybody that's watching. We have taken the necessary steps to have the equipment in place. All of our trucks, our responding units, before this incident, carried two of what is called the N95 mask that have become very popular. We have raised that to four. We also have over 400 of those masks in supply. So, we are ready. Director Lumpkin also mentioned that we have worked with AMR, who does do the transport of our patients, that we limit our personnel and their personnel, both cases, to exposure to a patient. That means that we are limiting the amount of folks that actually will come in contact with the patient. What Mooneyham talked about as well, those questions that are being asked of the patient before we even make contact are very important. We're asking about them having a fever, whether they have chills. The doctor mentioned respiratory distress, which is a key indicator, whether they have traveled outside of the country. All these questions are being asked ahead of time so that we can feel very comfortable that when we do respond to these calls, we do come in contact with the patient. We know as much information as possible.
Thank you, Chief.
It is well-known that many children get their primary meals during the day, during their school day. Is there any way for parents and community members to assist with the efforts of ensuring students have resources during potential school closures?
Well, first of all, let me say that we do feed our children during what we call the closed times of the school year, during spring break, during the winter break in December. And we have partners and grant opportunities where we're able to offer what we call a feeding program. And so, at any point in time, we have access to services where we can provide that. And we have been proactively planning in the event that schools should close, how and where we can provide those feeding services for our children. Now, we're in consultation with the USDA on emergency feeding and safely serving our students in the event that schools should close. I want to emphasize safely. Safely for the people that are serving and safely for the people who come to be served. So, we are planning for that, just as we plan all year round, and we'll be ready.
Mr. Williams, can you... Mr. Williams, can you talk a little bit about our preparedness? You, of course, is the person in charge of that, and so that the citizens of DeKalb County can be comfortable that we are prepared, we've taken the necessary steps so that as this medical emergency, if in fact it spreads, we'll be able to serve our residents.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. CEO. So I think it's important to note, some of the things that were discussed earlier are Comprehensive Emergency Operations Plan. It's really the foundation for how the county has prepared and is prepared to respond. That plan, although it's an all-hazards plan, it has the ability to work whether it's a tornado, whether it's a, you know, impacts of a hurricane, or if it's a health issue like what we're dealing with today. So over the past, you know, a number of years, that plan has been developed, it has been tested. What we have been primarily focused on over the past 30 days or so in dealing with COVID-19 is ensuring that we, as a business of, you know, providing service to 750,000 residents on a daily basis, whether it's water, whether it's trash, whether it's law enforcement services, that we're prepared to do that. And so what we have been ensuring is that our continuity of operations plan are all ready to go. You mentioned earlier that no matter what happens, DeKalb County will be here to serve. And we're ensuring that by ensuring that whether it means employees working from home and having the necessary computer access, understanding what the protocols would be to implement, the various responsibilities, ensuring that the employees are being paid, which will be important to keep them, you know, at work and on the job. So each of these steps are being taken on a regular basis. We're in constant contact, of course, with the Health Department, constantly in contact with the school district and our senior service providers who are assisting us, whether it's with Meals on Wheels and other programs, to get the information out. So we stand ready.
Thank you, sir. And let me reemphasize, the fact that we're here with our public health, our director, our superintendent, as well as leaders within our government speaks to preparedness. Communication is the key in dealing with any issue, especially one of this magnitude and significance. And I would hope and I believe that our citizens see that this is not unique. It is the result of years of cooperation and collaboration with each other as we serve our citizens.
If you've taken the flu shot before the coronavirus outbreak, does it prevent you from getting this virus, or will it make your immune system defend against it better?
The flu shot protects you against the flu. That's it. And it is, and I'm glad that question did come up because it has come up frequently, two very separate viruses. But what you don't want is COVID-19 super infected with the flu. And so having the flu vaccine at least protects you from having flu on top of this other virus.
Assistant Chief Yarbo, anything you want to add?
Well, briefly, the thing that I would like to add is that over the years, we've had great opportunity here in DeKalb County to work together, communicating, coordinating our plans, placing them into operation. I go all the way back to Katrina and look at the efforts we did as a county back then, came together as a community, worked our plans, developed all of the ways to respond to those types of emergencies, and you can look at the ones going forward from there. This is another opportunity here today to show that we are working together as a county, collaborating across all spectrums of public safety, public works, all of our administrative operations support, and very much so with our shared responsibility with our community to make sure that this will move forward, just like all of the past, and we will do so safely.
Thank you, sir.
If we or a family member contract the coronavirus, how do we care for ourselves or other family members to maximize the chance for full recovery?
So there is no medication specifically for COVID-19 at this point. And so it would be just as if you had the flu. It's symptomatic care. So cough relievers, decongestants, medications that reduce fever, fluids, like we say for everything. And if other family members are not symptomatic, you should isolate yourself from them so that they don't become symptomatic. Wash your hands frequently and also avoid touching your face because that's one of the ways that this virus is contracted, is when someone touches a surface and then touches their face, they can catch it like that. So again, every time you think about touching your face, you should wash your hands.
Are there any suggestions how to not train or at least create muscle memory to not touch your face?
I wish I knew because I probably do it more than anybody. I just hand sanitize though when I remember.
I understand.
It's hard when you have glasses because I touch my face all the time, so.
Yes. I want to once again encourage people to submit your questions. We have about 13 more minutes tonight, but we will answer every question submitted on this occasion. And also any suggestions you might have about how we might continue this dialogue in the future. This is not the last town hall we will have on this critical issue as we go forward, but we need your input and to help us be more effective in providing you with the information you need in order to keep yourself and your family safe.
We have a citizen who plans on traveling this weekend and would like to know what safety precautions should be taken prior to flight?
Well, it depends on where they're going. Depending on where they're going, they may not be allowed to go, depending on where they work. But if you are insisting on traveling, the same precautions as I said that you would do to prevent yourself from getting the flu are the same precautions you would to COVID-19. When I travel, I always keep a pack of wipes in my purse so I can wipe down the snack tray. That's probably one of the dirtiest things you'll ever see. I've seen someone actually change a diaper on a snack tray. So make sure you wipe that down, the seat, the handles on the side because you're sharing that with the individual next to you. Be careful in the bathroom about what you touch. Wash your hands, obviously, when you're coming in and out, but even the door to the restroom on an airplane can be a dirty thing. So when you punch in as you check your luggage or get your boarding pass, be careful that the screen is clean. So whatever you would do on a regular day, you need to do multiple times if you're choosing to travel at this point. And of course, if you see someone coughing, you should be trying to avoid them. And certainly, if you return back symptomatic, do not go to work. Do not present back to work and do not send your children to school.
How are we protecting county school personnel, including teachers, bus drivers, and other essential staff, from COVID-19?
Protecting.
The first thing we're doing is that we are empowering them with knowledge. Just as we are talking this evening about the things that we need to do to be proactive, we are training our employees and informing them through written communications that they should practice the tips that are often given about washing your hands, the length of washing your hands, using soap, and wiping down areas daily for cleaning purposes. The other thing that we're doing, we're making sure that they understand not to come to work sick. If they are sick and they're exhibiting, again, flu-like symptoms, a fever, stay home and isolate. And so we will continue with the proactive measures of empowering our employees with knowledge. That's the best proactive measures to make sure they understand exactly how to protect themselves and the people around them.
Thank you. I have a question for our very learned head of IT, Director, Mr. John Motosky, who did a great job helping us set up this town hall tonight. But how do we sanitize cell phones and keyboards? Because we're constantly in contact with them. We're always putting them to our face, if not our hands. It's the cell phone that's most often going to the face. What can we do to help make these devices safer for use in the midst of a medical emergency like this?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think the biggest challenge now, and I think someone mentioned it earlier, is just where do we get the supplies to do so? But there are wipes that you can use for your keyboard. There's other, whether it be Lysol-type sprays or other types of disinfectants. The key is, to Dr. Ford's point earlier, making sure that we have, whether it's the 60% or greater alcohol content or those kinds of things, because we could just be wiping and just smearing it around. So they do make wipes for keyboards. And what we are doing, we have, we don't have them in place yet here at the county, but we do have procurement orders in. We are cleaning keyboards with other types of sprays and those kinds of things. You have to, at home, though, be very careful because you don't want to be putting liquid sprays into your keyboard and then all of a sudden your keyboard no longer works. So typically, we're trying to be doing it just on the topical, on the keys, on the side of the keyboard, and just making sure that if you do have shared keyboards, shared resources, and those kinds of things, that you, every time you do have a change in who's going to be operating the device or what have you, make sure we're cleaning. I know you mentioned earlier about the election machines and those kinds of things. The advice there is, and that every time someone leaves that device, it will be cleaned, and then the next person will come. Same recommendation on keyboards, iPads, iPhones, with all the touchscreens and those kinds of things. You can use on your screens even the gel type. I wouldn't put the gel on there, but if you put the gel on like a cloth, thank you, and then wipe the screen off, just it's a delicate type thing, that is fine for your screens. And I would try to the extent possible, avoid sharing of the cell phones and those kinds of things just to minimize that impact.
All right. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Oh, please.
I would also like to add that we transport over 80,000 children a day with over 1,000 buses every day. And we have raised the protocol for bus cleaning. And we are using our sanitation cleaners to clean our buses every day. And we're doing it at a more thorough level with this crisis.
Thank you. Director Lumpkin?
The basis, I think, Dr. Ford has stressed and others have stressed, hygiene is one of the critical things that we have to do as a society, and that's with our police officers and many of us, and particularly, I don't know about the females, but I know what occurs in a lot of male bathrooms, some of those habits we have to break. They would have to wash. We have to wash for appropriate amounts of time. The, we, in the policing field, we have to ensure through roll call and checks that we are actually changing our hygiene habits and culture. I think we will do it, and hopefully that culture will help us. The superintendent, you, and the kids, we change a lot of things because our children tell us to change. I started wearing a seatbelt because the kids came home saying that we had to wear seatbelts, and they learned that in the schools. We had to do certain other things that the children pushed us into. So continues to teach our children to instruct their parents and their guardians to be hygiene-conscious always.
Thank you.
Since stores are out of supplies, will the county have masks or hand sanitizer stations for the public?
No. But that may be available through the Department of Public Health.
No. So at this point, as far as masks are concerned, the CDC is not recommending masks for the general public, so we will not be just dispensing masks. Also.
Explain why, Dr. Ford.
Well, first, there's a number of reasons. First of all, the regular mask that we would use in a setting such as this, those are, you have to replace them frequently. Your breath is moist, and you would have to replace that mask five or six times during the course of a day. The specific masks that we're using for healthcare personnel, as it relates to COVID-19, are N95 masks. Those masks have to be fit-tested. You can't just pop them on your face. And so there's a process by which you are sized for those. And again, each individual contact, you have to replace that mask. So there's no way we have adequate supply of either commercial masks or N95 masks to support the entire community. So right now, we are providing masks to individuals who present to the Health Department, as we always do, if they present with any kind of cough or respiratory symptoms. They are provided with general masks and then dealt with accordingly, but we will not be providing N95 masks to the general community or commercial masks.
Will a mask prevent you from contracting COVID-19?
I could not guarantee anything in terms of that. The mask is a preventive measure. It's to stop droplet infection because the thought is that your mouth is covered, but you know, there's other ways that you can get it. You take the mask off as you change masks, you know, your face is exposed if you touch your face as you're changing the mask. So it would decrease your risk, certainly, but I don't speak in guarantees ever.
All right.
What is the procedure?
We got to something, Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Thurman. I also want to add, we, you know, we met with our principals on yesterday, and we see an increased use of masks by students and staff. And we were just talking with our lead nurse on yesterday, and it's very difficult for the school district personnel, our nurses in the building, and our principals and assistant principals, who are helping us with monitoring of students to determine who's sick and who's not when multiple people are wearing masks. And so we are asking our parents and our students and our employees to not wear the mask because the mask will let us know if you are wearing it, then you are sick. And if you are sick, then we want you to go home. And so it will assist us with the see something, say something, if we do not have our children and our employees all walking around in masks. So we're making an effort for them to not wear the mask so that we can delineate very quickly who we need to be monitoring in the building.
Thank you.
What is the procedure for people with no insurance as it pertains to testing and treatment for the virus outbreak? We know there's no treatment, per se, but pertaining to testing regarding people who present with symptoms who do not have insurance?
So that's a difficult question for me to answer because the Board of Health is not providing testing at this point. If testing were provided at the Board of Health, obviously, we bill and charge on a sliding scale, and so we do not turn patients away for ability to pay. Private hospitals don't have that same belief. And so that is going to be something we're going to have to look at. At this point, I do not know whether or not Georgia Public Health Lab is charging for these tests. I do not believe so, but I would not confirm that at this point. As more testing becomes available, we'll have to identify a way to figure out how folks who do not have ability to pay. This is a public health emergency, and so at this point, I would not discourage anyone from presenting to a healthcare facility simply because they did not have funds.
Thank you. Of course, COVID-19 presents major medical challenges, but there's also a very real psychological component to this that generates stress and anxiety. I know Dr. Tindall is here with the DeKalb County School District who oversees counseling. Help us better understand, not just from a student perspective, but the psychological, emotional anxiety in the context of what this is doing to citizens in DeKalb and really all across this world.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, CEO Thurman. Yes, this is really important and something that we are really keeping our eyes on in the school district, not only for our students, but for our staff and our families as well. We have something on our website that is directed for parents so that they can speak with their students about what's happening. We know if you're watching the news, if you're tuned into the media, almost every time you turn on the TV, you're seeing something about COVID-19. When you're on social media, the students are sending us texts and messages about things that people are saying, and sometimes it's not true. So what we have to do is exactly what we're doing here and what we've been doing is continue to educate so that we can make sure that people really understand what's going on, and we can help to dispel a lot of the rumors that are out there. But also, we also know that this can trigger some mental health concerns with individuals. So we encourage persons that need to speak with someone, to speak with their therapist or go seek therapy if they need to talk with someone regarding the anxieties that they may be feeling. Sometimes situations like this bring up other incidents or events that have happened, similar to post-traumatic stress disorder. So we need to make sure that we really tune in to what's happening individually, adults, our students, just to make sure that we're able to support them in the best way that we possibly can.
As a parent, how do, as a parent, how do I talk to my son or daughter about COVID-19? And I know the age differentiates, but give us some principles or ideas of how to have this conversation with your child.
Well, I think one of the things, CEO Thurman, as we've talked and we've heard earlier, is talking about what it is, just being very honest about what this is and what's happening. But then also talking about things such as flu and understanding that this is something that we that we monitor illnesses and viruses all of the time. But we also need to make sure that students and families understand preventative factors as well. So I really stress, and we always talk about hand washing, the sanitizers, things of that sort, covering your mouth, so that we can help them understand that there is a way to prevent as well. So it's not just everyone looking at it as a doomsday-type thing, but understanding that, you know, and when you get to older students, you start talking about probability and things of that sort. When you look at large numbers and the numbers that are really impacted, what happens with the positive cases, how they're treating them, things of that sort, it's a little deeper discussion. But I think it is important for parents to have that conversation with their children, so that they understand. And then, as parents, paying attention to what's going on, the information that's being released by our public health partners, so that we are all up to date with the most current information about what's happening with COVID-19.
Thank you so much, Dr. Tindall. That's okay. I misread your eye contact. Thank you so much, Dr. Tindall.
Are there going to be virtual options available for parents who just don't feel comfortable sending their children to school at this time? The question is really, can parents voluntarily practice digital learning without it counting as an absence?
At this time, and we know that this is changing, but at this time, we really want your children in school. And so, we are encouraging our parents to exercise the proactive measures that we have published on our website, send your children to school, so that they can be with their teachers, and they can get the instructional program that they need. In the event that this should change, we are prepared with our digital learning days to be able to address learning outside of the walls of brick-and-mortar buildings, so that we can provide them with an instructional program.
Remembered what it was. The question about mental health, this is a big thing, and that's why I'm so happy that despite our concerns about COVID-19, that we chose to still have this event and allow people to submit questions anonymously, because there's a lot of misinformation, and people may be too embarrassed to ask in a public forum. So whatever concern, there is no dumb question at this point, and no ridiculous question, because we don't know a lot of these things. And so, the more information that we can provide to the community, hopefully, the calmer people will be about this. So I'm hoping that folks are not shy about asking whatever they want to ask tonight, while we're all sitting here, and you have, can avail yourself of all this information.
And please, don't just believe everything you read on the internet. I'm just, please, don't, because, is that fair, Doctor?
I could give you a laundry list of some of the rumors I've heard about how you get coronavirus, and it's a little disturbing, and some of these come from adults. I overheard a conversation today in a pharmacy that just made me shake my head. So, I'm really happy that we're here tonight, and I'm hoping that people really absorb this information and walk away with a sense of calm about the capacity of the folks sitting at this table to manage this disease.
And it's not funny, yeah.
The virus is new, but our collaborations have been going on forever.
Yes, and it's not funny to say it, but I saw what people believed it if you drank Corona beer. Did you hear that? No.
In that same vein, there's a question about, could you please demonstrate or explain the proper way to use hand sanitizer?
Well, let me first talk about the proper way to wash your hands. You know, again, this is not a rinse thing where we do the water and shake, and we're done. I wash my hands as if I were almost going into surgery. People who have jewelry on, you need to be mindful of your jewelry. A lot of bacteria get stuck in between rings and bracelets, so if possible, remove your jewelry when you wash your hands. If you don't, make sure that you clean around your jewelry, and at least slide it up so you can get underneath. You should wash your hands for 20 seconds. That's two happy birthdays. They had a whole list on one of the pages about all the songs that last for 20 minutes that you can sing while you wash your hands. I don't care which song you're singing, but it needs to be a 20-second song. webs, wash in between the webs of your fingers, which a lot of people do not do, up under your watch, almost up to your wrist, when you wash your hands. And that's basically the same way that you apply hand sanitizer, is that same back-and-forth webs, under the hands.
Hold your hands up, Doc, so we can get it on camera. Show us, show us how to do it.
I should have gotten a fresh manicure if I knew we could do that.
Get up real close. All right, show us how to do it.
So, I actually have some here. So I will demonstrate, because as I cough, I put hand sanitizer back on my hands. So, a dab, you do not have to put half of the bottle on your hand either. So, a small amount, a quarter-sized amount, rub your hands together in between, both hands, webs, I try to do every single finger, honestly. Both hands, all in the webs, slide the jewelry around, get those wrists, let it dry.
Stand up.
Aye.
Inquiring minds want to know.
You want me to do it again?
Yes, one more time.
You're going to have the cleanest hands in the city.
This is important. This can save lives.
A dab. Hands together, all over the hands, in between each finger. It should take a while. It should take a while to do this. So if you do one of these, you're not really doing what you need to do. I try to do every single web in between, slide that jewelry up, get up under there, move the watch around, and do that. Let it dry, and then you should be okay. Somebody's going to call and go, no, that's not it.
How will you work, this is for the CEO, how will you work to ensure that residents continue to have access to water? Will the county cease any water shut-offs that may be due for payment or other reasons?
No. What we, the Board of Commissioners, more than three years ago, passed an ordinance whereby water is not shut off. We will work with any resident who's having issues, financial or otherwise, that might result in a water shut-off. So if you're in a position where you can't pay your bill, you should contact our Department of Watershed.
Utility Customer.
Utility, what, give us the name?
Our Utility Customer Operations Department.
Right. And make sure you tell the truth. And we will work with you to make sure you have safe, clean water, so that you and your family can continue to be healthy.
Will code red be used for public service announcements to remind residents of the seriousness of the situation and how to care for themselves during this time?
We will use any and all resources available that we have in DeKalb County. Quite frankly, this virtual town hall is evidence of that fact, to ensure that you have all the information that we can share with you, so that you can make good decisions, the best decisions, on how to protect yourself, your family, your friends, and your neighbors. And as I stated earlier, through all the various platforms that are available to DeKalb County Government, we're going to continue to work with our partners. We can't do it alone. As you can see, the expertise is oftentimes in other departments and other agencies, but working together, I can, I feel certain that we will have a safer community.
Just a reminder to all of our viewers and listeners, our phone lines will be open for another about eight to 10 minutes. So if you have been holding on to a burning question that you'd like to ask, please call us at 404-371-2400. Send us an email at townhall@dekalbcountyga.gov, or find us on social media, on Facebook at It's in DeKalb GA, and Twitter on It's in DeKalb.
And if you have suggestions or ideas, how we can better serve you during this medical emergency situation, we would love to hear from you through those same platforms that Ms. Carlos just shared with you.
Will the school board allow children to be removed from the classroom based on parent concern alone, without a doctor's note? Some treatment providers have been unwilling to write such a recommendation as a matter of policy, even when requested by a parent.
As stated earlier, every school has a nursing professional in every building. And when a child is sick, or an adult believes that a child is sick, the first operation to do is to contact the nurse and allow the nurse to run the assessment. They have protocols. And if that child meets a protocol of a fever, or vomiting, or flu-like symptoms, that's the assessment protocol we will use to remove the child from the room and then send the child home.
Will DeKalb Proms be rescheduled?
Today, no. We are moving forward today. Now, things are changing. But as of today, we are moving forward with our school district activities, our school district sponsored activities, and that's where we are today.
If your child is sick with fever, assuming there's been no contact with COVID-19 or recent travel, just a fever from what you believe is the flu or a virus, how long before you send your child back to school?
So, from a pediatric perspective, we recommend that children not return to school until they are fever-free and symptom-free. So that can be anywhere between three to five days.
What is the expected duration of any closure? Is it enough time to sanitize, or 14 days to wait out the virus?
Closure being a school closure?
Yes, this is a school question. There's a follow-up question as well, but it's a school question.
Well, first of all, let me, let me say this. If there is a school closure, I do want the public to understand how that decision is made. If there is an exposure of COVID-19 or a positive test of COVID-19, the very first thing the school district will do will be to contact the DeKalb Board of Health and the Georgia Department of Public Health. We will also notify the governor's office, the Georgia Department of Education, and we will work with them to ensure they understand what we are doing. Now, let me be clear, it does not preclude me from making a decision to close school. I will close school based on the best interests of students and families. But it does allow us, when we're partnering with these agencies, to work in concert and streamline communications, so that our constituents know exactly what is going on. We want to work in conjunction with them. We want to be timely, we want to be accurate, and we want to be complete. And those school closures will be announced on our website, as well as the Georgia Department of Education website. Now, with that said, we will work in, under the guidance of the Board of Health and those other agencies that you have heard, to determine, based on what we're dealing with. In some cases, as you can see with other school districts, they've made some decisions based on what they were facing. Right now, it looks like it's a 14-day wait. But to tell you exactly the answer to that today, it depends on what we're dealing with, and we're working in, under the guidance of the Board of Health and Georgia Department of Public Health and the other agencies.
We'll take two more questions, and then we'll allow for the panelists to provide closing comments.
The supplemental question to that was, how much time is built into the remaining school year as makeup time? And so, if you use that time, will the school year be extended?
We currently have four makeup days left built into the calendar. We also have the opportunity to use virtual learning dates. And so, we're, so far, at this point, we're prepared. And we'll have to make that decision at the time, or if we should need it, but we do have four days built in.
If someone you know and are close to has had close contact with a confirmed COVID-19 case, but does not feel ill, what should they do?
Well, there needs to be clarity about what close contact means, because I think different people think that's a different thing. So when we, in the health field, think of close contact, we're talking about less than six feet distance for more than 10 minutes. So if you sat next to someone on the bus, that is not in our, well, if it's a long bus ride, let me find a different example. But if you have, if you pass somebody in the grocery store and find out later that they are COVID-positive, that is not extended contact. So what we're talking about is 10 minutes or more, and six feet. So that's probably a family member or coworker. If you, if they become positive, what we are doing, and let me explain the steps when someone is identified as having COVID-19, as soon as we are notified, between the local DeKalb Board of Health and the state, we do a contact investigation. And so, we evaluate every individual that has come into contact with that person to determine the level of exposure. How long were you with that person? Are you symptomatic? Those that are symptomatic, we are isolating. If you are asymptomatic, but you have been exposed, you are put into quarantine, which means you are not symptomatic yet, but you've been exposed. And so, you would still be expected to stay home for the 14 days, and we would monitor you accordingly. If you are having severe symptoms, the recommendation is that clearly you go and be tested. And so, we would take a specimen, your private physician would take a specimen, that would then go to the Georgia Public Health Lab, and we would test you. And then, we would send that on to CDC for confirmation. So it's a lengthy process, and that's why what we do is, even if you are suspected, we isolate you, so that while we're identifying all the results from this test, we're still protecting other folks that may potentially be exposed.
Thank you.
In closing, just a reminder, since the CDC and other health organizations have suggested limiting public meetings and gatherings, there was a question about ways to participate in county business via live stream. All of our Board of Commissioners' meetings are streamed live on DCTV and on government access television, if you live in DeKalb County and have cable service in DeKalb. You can watch it on TV, you can watch it online at DCTV, on DCTV, on DeKalb County's website, and committee meetings are also live on Ustream. So every Tuesday, you can participate in the process.
Thank you so much. Let's give Ms. Carlos a round of applause. Thank you so much, you did a great job. Closing comments, we'll start with Director Lunkin.
Just want to reiterate that in public safety and throughout the DeKalb County Departments, we will remain in a constant state of improvement and with contingency plans to address any issues that what might impact our citizens or our stakeholders, and that includes every employee of DeKalb County.
Thank you.
Sir, I appreciate the opportunity to serve on this panel. I'd like to assure our citizens and our visitors that DeKalb County Public Safety is ready to answer the call.
Thank you. Superintendent?
CEO Thurman, thank you for allowing the school district to participate in this very critical, important event tonight. And I want the parents and guardians of the 100,000 students and our 15,000 employees in the county as, at large. We're working hard every day to ensure that we put the right proactive measures in place to protect our students and employees, and we commit to you that we'll keep at it every single day.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Thank you again to the CEO for coming up with an innovative way of providing information and still protecting the public. I'll say that again. None, no one at this table is a stranger to the Board of Health. We have worked with all of these partners previously in preparedness activities, creating points of distribution at the schools, working with our first responders. And so, what you don't want to do in a time of crisis is just be introducing yourself to folk. And so, we have all worked together for many, many years, and so, this is just yet another opportunity for us to exercise things that have been planned many, many times. And the goal of that, again, is to provide preparation and protection, but not panic. We really need folks to just be calm. I hope that this is streamed over and over again, so that folks who are unavailable to livestream will get to see it, if they weren't able to tune in right now. And we are looking forward to all the questions, so that we can answer them. And I hope that other jurisdictions take this as a model way of trying to communicate in this time of such anxiety.
Thank you.
So to reduce our fear and the rise of apprehension of what's going on, we can have all the plans, but if we don't communicate our plans to you, the ones we're serving, that's where the fear will start to rise. And I thank the CEO for bringing this together tonight, because here's an opportunity for you to hear across the board, across the spectrum of DeKalb County Public Safety, Board of Health, our schools, et cetera, that we are working together, we have planned, and we will continue to modify those plans as needed, to ensure that public safety is our utmost concern, and that essential services will remain for you, the citizen. And we look forward to hearing from you at all of our opportunities, online, in person, as we move forward through this crisis.
Thank you so much. And I would like to thank the men and women who really worked behind the scenes to make this possible, Department of Communications. this possible, Department of Communications, Ms. Diamond Lewis and her staff. Let's get them a round of applause. They did an outstanding job. Thank you, Diamond. Communications, Ms. Sarah Page, Andrew Carthon and the team there rallied together. And once we made the decision not to have the traditional town hall, but to have a virtual one, this entire team came together in short order and made this possible. So thank you so much for your service, as well as my friends at the DeKalb County School District, Superintendent Tyson, who's a personal friend, my former chief of staff who had me propped up while I served as superintendent, made my superintendence possible. Thank you so much. And we're so proud of her for once again answering the call when the district was in need to stabilize our most valuable resource, which is our public school district. Thank you so much. Dr. Ford, we've traveled many moons together in various capacities. Thank you as well. We appreciate you, Director Lumpkin, all the men and women in uniform here today, and John Motowski, who played a key role in the IT Department. Let's give John a hand. Thank you so much. Thank you as well. And just delighted to have had this opportunity to share this information from the COO's office and others with our citizens. We will revisit this. We're going to go back and see how we can improve it. We'll bring in more experts so that we can continue to educate our students. Our sign language interpreter, let's get him a round of applause. Thank you so much. The key is communication and a court reporter. And by the way, our court reporter, this is being recorded, it will, once she completes her work, it'll be placed online so you will have a verbatim copy of everything that was said so it can be revisited. Ms. Tyson, you, I mean, Ms. Carlos, you want to speak to that?
Tonight's video, along with the transcript of the proceeding tonight, will be able to be accessed tomorrow on DeKalb County's website. The transcript will be uploaded in a few days once it is completed, but the video will be available on DeKalb County's website. That's www.decalbcountyga.gov. And please make sure to check out our page dedicated to the coronavirus, COVID-19, at
Thank you, Ms. Tyson. This will also be broadcast on our...
Yes, sir. We will broadcast on PDS TV, Channel 24 Comcast, and we will also stream it from our website.
Once again, thank you so much. I want to thank the people of DeKalb County for honoring me with the opportunity to serve as your CEO and to reaffirm what my partners in public service have said, is that we are committed and we're focused and we will do whatever is necessary to protect the men and women who have honored us with the opportunity to serve. Thank you so much. God bless and particularly pray for those families who have already been impacted by this virus. You are not alone. Let us do all that we can to support these families and individuals who have now or might be impacted in the future. God bless you and good night.